Good evening. It's called Order, the Roll Call, please.
Mike Davenport.
Here.
Christopher Espinoza.
Here.
Sherrell Fuller.
Here.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Here.
Terry Pavisic.
Here.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Here.
Nancy Cupca.
Here. We have a quorum. Let's stand for the first.
Excuse me. Scarlett O'Hara.
Here.
Jane Taldano.
Here.
I'm so sorry. I do that to you every week. I am so sorry. I like count to seven and I stop. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with, we need a motion for the Board of Education to approve the minutes of the December 13th, 2021 business meeting and the January 10th, 2022 workshop meeting.
No move.
Second.
Terry and Joanna.
Thank you very much. Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Christopher Espinoza.
Aye.
Sherrell Fuller. I missed one of the meetings, so. Thank you. Jenny Hagstrom.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupca.
Aye. The minute is carried.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the first reception of visitors. Do we have any?
We have comments left split for the second reception of visitors.
Then we'll move on to the recommendations and reports of the superintendent. Return to in-person learning.
All right, as we have for the last several years, we start with the update of case counts. You can see we're starting to come back down, just as the rest of society is. We made it through the most challenging part with staff absences coming back from break. That first week was definitely challenging. I'll talk in a second about one of the changes that made this a little bit better coming back. And since we passed the halfway point in the year, I thought I could give you a quick graphic representation of what we saw of the year and then what we saw when Omicron showed up and the impact on student and staff absences. Remember, staff absences, we've been reporting monthly. That's why they show up as those little red lines. Where student absences, we've been reporting weekly. But you can definitely see, we remained pretty low through November and then started to climb after Thanksgiving and then climbed greatly returning from break and now we're kind of on our way back down again. One of the changes that was made by the CDC and finally adopted at the state level was some changes around close contacts and quarantine exclusion. One of the changes is probably not in our favor for staff in the fact that staff need to now have received both vaccines and the booster to be exempt from being in close contact. We have shared this information with our staff and let them know of that change. For anybody under 18, it's just the primary series to be excluded. And then for close contacts or confirmed cases, the exclusion quarantine period has dropped from 10 days to five days, as everybody is aware probably. But since our last meeting, that change went into effect for all schools. So that when we go back and look at the number of staff out or testing positive, their impact on the school, you know, staffing the school changed drastically when we went from 10 days to five days. So these are the changes and the rules that we're currently operating under. As always, we'll update the board as information changes and develops. Any questions on any of that? All right, that's it for that. I'm going to invite Jim Forward to talk about the next two items, starting with the North High Roofing Project.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Okay, in November, I brought a few projects to you. These are two of them, first being the roof replacement at North. We bid out in December. This is a project that we're going to try to get done before the midsummer. So as you remember, when I talked to you in November, we moved, this is capital work from this past year. So when we had the Chiller Project at North funded by Esser, we then got more aggressive with this project. It was due up to be done at North this summer. Now we pushed it back to last year's capital to get it done with that funding and then going into next year's capital funding, we got more projects added. And I'll be bringing those back to you in March. So I just want to clear that on why this is coming so early. So we went out in December hoping that our contractors would be aggressive in their bidding and they were. So the prices came in pretty good. We had 14 bids. And between the roofing and the plumbing, both combined were still under our budget number that we started with, so we're happy with that. The plumbing is for the roof drain that needs to be added to the project as well. We were having an issue with drainage of the roof, so that's part of this. That's why you see a plumbing contractor there as well. So we scoped out the contractors. We're familiar with them and they met all our bid requirements. So tonight we'll be asking to award a contract for $395,120, which is the total of both.
Any questions on the roof replacement?
Just curious if the roof drain issue, is it going to impact anything down below? Any drywall work, any?
No, it's exterior for the most part. The existing had an issue. We repaired it. So just a little background, when we had the water leak by the commons at North from the MFP. So that roof was cut where the commons is and over the classrooms and that hallway that's east of that area, that was the existing roof. What happened, we put the new roof in over the commons and connected it, but the drain issue then collapsed on the east side. So we had to do a repair so the water can get out, but the water actually overflowed, stayed on the roof, and that's what came down on that wooden area on the side of the east side of the commons that bowered it out and that's where we had an issue. This is correcting that as well.
All right, this is an action item later on this evening. And then Jim, second item.
This is ARP Esser 3 funding. So we went to the schools. We asked them what the needs were that would fit under the grant funding parameters. And for share what units that are due up, that are very old, that aren't working as well as the new ones that we put in. So we came up with three, two at South and one at North. So the contracts are for units putting it in, building automation systems, that's the 603, and then the electric is to hook up to the units. We had 10 bids. We did bid out in December. Another reason why we bid out so early is these units could be as much as six to seven months out, so we wanted to get them ordered. This construction will be in the summer. We did scope out. We worked with YMI, obviously, with the MFP and ARC-1, so we know the contractors. One other piece that I wrote in my memo, in these new units, they have UV lamps availability. So we took, it was like $4,000 for this option. It was an add-on. So we took it for both the units at South and the unit at North, and we're going to try it out. They're supposed to really help and I wrote it out, but the bacteria in the air, the recycling of the air, the longevity of the ductwork and the unit. So we'll see how they go and I'll report back and how well we're doing with them. The maintenance on that is very minimum. You change them out every few years. They last a long time. So there's not a lot of maintenance and long-term costs for something as good as that. So this also came in slightly under budget for the construction, so tonight we'll ask you to approve these two contracts for $652,738 together.
Any questions for Jim on this project?
Do we have a fallback if the equipment doesn't arrive in time?
We are ordering it so early. If we don't get it in, we're assuming it's going to be here by May.
Okay.
That's what they're saying drop dead is. If it's not here, we're not doing anything to existing until those are here.
They're on, okay, good.
So that's our plan until they show up. So we're going to store them at the YMI storage place and I'm assuming they're going to come in early and we'll be fine. But the fallout will be we wait.
Okay.
Until they get here.
Yeah, such a challenge right now.
It sure is. And just for both, both of these, and I'll be bringing all the ones for capital in March, it's a tough market out there. You know this and it's hard to get good quality because everything's so expensive, steel, down, everything. So for us to be under budget on both of these.
It's amazing.
Really a good thing right now.
I don't know how you did it. I mean, I heard 14 bids and.
I worked with White and we thought if we can throw these out right before Christmas, they're going to be like, we got to get a contract before the holidays.
Okay.
And that's when they came out and they got aggressive.
So smart.
Good, good, good going.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
All right, in our last board meeting, we presented on our summer school recommendations and the calendar. This is up for an action item today. This is the last opportunity to ask Rob if you have any other questions regarding this from the last board meeting. So you know, Rob and Gina are actively working on increasing our offerings for summer school as we have committed to the board and that will ramp up over time as well. So any questions following that? So the summer school recommendations and the summer calendar are action items this evening. All right, I will bring up Mark here to present on the annual comprehensive financial report, which has been given a new name this year.
I was going to say, didn't we used to call it the CAFR?
Yeah, it is changed terminology to annual comprehensive financial report.
Good evening. I'm going to read this to you.
Thanks. I'm just going to take a little nap right now.
They did change the title. There was a conflict with what the term acronym was in other nations and so they just changed it to annual comprehensive financial report. And then really, it's a document that's meant to please different people or displease people at different levels if they have to read the whole thing. One is that there's letters that the auditors give you, management letters telling you that whether or not there are any issues in the financial statements that would cause them to qualify their opinion, which is a negative. Mark saying that you didn't do something, so we have to qualify it. It's a good thing except for, we don't have any qualifications at all. We're going to submit this report again to, we have submitted actually, to ASBO International for a review. And the reason we do that is to make sure that we have a document that is comparable to other schools and has all the same reporting requirements with it. And that helps us. That's one of our uses, not necessarily anything you would care about, but it's something that we do so we know we can compare ourselves to other schools and find out how we're doing. The introductory section has the really, the big background that helps somebody else looking at it know what nuances we have in Downers Grove. So I used to do the review for these for audits in Georgia and different states and it helps you understand what goes on. We have a unique tax base formula that we use here for primary funding. So anyways, the introductory section, we'll give you a real slow walkthrough of some things. The financial section, the most important thing there is auditor's opinion. It is unqualified. It's the best that they can give us. They also, in their management letters that we gave you, they found no inconsistencies in terms of internal control or problems, no material issues with filing or anything like that. So we're clean there as well, doing okay. And then the back section, I think, is really the only part that would be most interesting to do and that's a 10-year history of a lot of stuff and where our major taxpayers are, what the enrollment is compared to the revenue section. So that's, that in a nutshell is the CAFR. There's really, if you look at it for the financial aspect of it, that's when it gets really confusing because they use two different bases of accounting. And really, one is full accrual, which is one basis of accounting. Another is on modified accrual. That's the major financial stuff that's in here. And then what we use for our budgeting quarterly, you'll see that next, is like a modified cash basis. So it's hard to use one and look at it and say, well, where are we really? are we really? Actually, when I looked that up between the statement of assets and full accrual, modified accrual, we were right in the middle of that when we balanced things out and changed it. So, I think it's a good tool to keep, it told me it's a good tool to keep using the budget. We know from year to year how much that changes, and that'll tell us what kind of direction we're heading as a district. So, I don't know if you have any questions. Happy to answer them.
Nope.
The key takeaway is clean audit.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, we're good with it.
As it has been every year.
As it has been every year.
Yep.
All right.
And we're glad it's so boringly clean. Thank you.
It's a good document to be boring, yes.
Yes.
That's what we want. All right, quarterly financial report.
Quarterly, to start with, the operating fund of revenues, collected expenditures paid, this is fairly normal. We've got the revenues compared to actual, the budget there, the budget for expenditures, they're 45% collected. Revenues, of course, I think if you flip to the next one, we'll get that, the breakdown. Property taxes are not 100%. That's not unusual. 52% of other local, 47% state aid, and 48% for federal. So, that's fairly typical for us, so they're coming in the way we expect. We should make our revenue goals. Just one little touch, if you flip the next one, please. The state money that comes to us, the only thing we get now is this evidence-based funding. It's a large chunk of money, but it hasn't changed much. I think we got $6,000 in new money, millions of dollars of evidence-based funding, so it doesn't change much. And the idea is, it's called hold harmless. And this little graph here is done to show you that in 2011, way back at the left, the $1, in one year, in 2012, it would cost a dollar or two, the same thing that you paid a dollar for in the prior year. And so, if you go all the way to the end, if they're still giving us the same dollar amount after 10 years, we're 24% out of whack because it's a dollar, it costs a $1.24 to buy what you bought before. And everybody says, well, you can just cut down. Well, you can't really cut down on buses, right? You still need the same on buses. And buses is one thing that's coming in this upcoming year, it's going to be incredibly expensive. It's just they cannot get drivers who want to do it. COVID keeps them out, some of them, some of them just age out and decide, I'm tired, I'm retiring completely. So, they're really having to increase wages in that particular group, and we're seeing increased proposals over, you know, 10% so far. And we're working on it, trying to make sure that if we do something like that, where we give them unusually high increase, that we get something forward, at least a guarantee that they're going to perform, and if they don't, we can subtract from that. So, we're starting to get more, I guess, developed in terms of setting up contracts that will keep them wanting to make sure they meet their goals. And I know they are trying, but this is a little financial incentive, and sometimes that's what it takes. So, the next is the expenditures paid, 43%. We're pretty much right on with all of these. Purchase service at 52%, supplies 55%. We're midway through our school year, it's all, those are just about off correct. Salary and benefits, we're at 43%, so we're doing actually pretty well there. So, we're looking at revenues collected, and the only thing I wanted to take, your takeaway from this is that on the right, I adjusted the $10 million bond issue out of this, because it kind of skewed it, made it look like we're collecting. But, if you take that out, we're at 92% and 93%. We're right on where we were last year. And last year was a very choppy year, and this year is also kind of choppy in terms of things happening, different transportation budgets and things like that being different from the norm. And if we look at the expenditures, we're 44%, we're 46%. Some of that is a capital outlay that went the other direction for us. But, everything is pretty much on par with what we expected to be. So, we're not nervous about anything right now. I mean, the budget is proposing, and the budget was a $2.9 million deficit. We're probably going to fall into that this year, just because revenues haven't changed much, and expenditures are up in areas like transportation that started to hit us this year. So, we're actually on track for where we thought we would be at this point with 1.9 as the deficit as of December 31st. I think that does it. I don't know if there's anything-
I think that's it. Yeah?
So, any questions? Any questions?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right.
Information requests?
Yes, FOIA requests, we had them, filled them, and they're available and listed on our website.
Okay. Next, we'll move to the consent agenda. Is there any item that any member of the board wishes to remove for further discussion? Hearing now, and we need a motion for the Board of Education to approve the consent agenda as presented, which includes the personnel report, leave of the absence certified, transfer of position classified, appointments classified, the personnel report, retirements classified, resignations classified, the personnel report, terminations classified, the financial pages, educational chores, the crisis de-escalation and fiscal management oversight team, and review of the closed session minutes and verbatim recordings.
So moved.
Second, Sherelle and Terry.
Thank you very much. Sherelle Fuller.
Aye.
Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Christopher Espinoza.
Aye.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupca.
Aye, the consent agenda is carried. We'll now move to the action items. The first is the award of the bid. We need a motion for the Board of Education to approve contracts for the North High Roofing Project to Metal Master Roof Master and the A&amp;H Plumbing in the aggregate amount of $395,120.
So moved.
Okay. Mike and Joanna.
Thank you. Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Christopher Espinoza.
Aye.
Sherelle Fuller.
Aye.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Aye.
Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupca.
Aye, the motion carries. Next, we need a motion for the Board of Education to approve contracts for the North High and South High HVAC Systems to the YMI Group Incorporated and ARC One Electric in the aggregate amount of $652,738.
So moved.
Second.
Mike and Joanna.
Okay, thank you. Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Christopher Espinoza.
Aye.
Sherelle Fuller.
Aye.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Aye.
Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupca.
Aye, the motion carries. Next, we need a motion for the Board of Education to approve the 2022 summer school recommendations as presented.
So moved.
Second, Mike and Terry.
Thank you. Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Oh, aye.
Thank you. Christopher Espinoza.
Aye.
Sherelle Fuller.
Aye.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupca.
Aye, the motion carries. Next, we need a motion for the Board of Education to approve the 2022 summer school and summer calendar as presented.
So moved.
Joanna and Mike.
Okay, Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Christopher Espinoza.
Aye.
Sherelle Fuller.
Aye.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Aye.
Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupca.
Aye, motion carries. And finally, we need the motion of the board for the Board of Education to approve the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021, as presented.
So moved.
Terry and Mike.
I'll take the second.
Thank you. Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Christopher Espinoza.
Aye.
Sherelle Fuller.
Aye.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupca.
Aye, motion carries. We'll move on to the reception of visitors. This is the second reception of visitors, which is intended for audience members to address the board on any topic pertaining to Community High School District 99. Comments are limited to three minutes to provide all visitors an equal opportunity to address the board. Individuals needing more time should submit their thoughts in writing to the Board Secretary, Mrs. Niedek. Visitors addressing the board need to submit a comment slip to the Board Secretary and will be invited to the microphone. Prior to addressing the board, audience members should state their full name. The proceedings are being taped recorded for the purpose of producing accurate meeting minutes, and they are being streamed. The Board's Presiding Officer, myself, reserves the right to modify these protocols if circumstances warrant. Audience observation of these protocols is appreciated.
All right, we have two comments loops. The first speaker is Noel Manley.
Good evening. My name is Noel Manley, and I'm a resident of Darien, Illinois. The United States is not a racist country, and District 99 is not a racist community. However, you could not tell this by the woke faculty's latest episode. Specifically, District 99 Board Policy 710 states the following: "Equal educational opportunities. Equal educational and extracurricular opportunities shall be available for all students without regard to color, race, nationality, religion, sex, sexual orientation, ancestry, age, physical or mental disability, gender identity, status of being homeless, immigration status, order of protection status, actual or potential marital or parental status, including pregnancy." Given this very clear anti-discrimination policy, it is unclear to me how District 99 can sponsor an event using taxpayer dollars that limits the events to persons of color. As you know, last month, notice was posted of a now canceled Students of Color field trip opportunity. It is clear the intent of this event was to encourage minority students to consider a career in education. However, despite any good intention, the subtext of this matter was clearly discriminatory. If you're white, you need not apply. So, where is the diversity? Where is the equity? And where is the inclusion? This action flies in the face of board policy as well as the 1964 Federal Civil Rights Act. It is segregation. This is yet another example of woke culture implementing critical race theory in District 99. President Kupka made an affirmative statement last summer that critical race theory is not present in this district, and she is wrong again. Whether officially or unofficially, critical race theory is present in this district and is actively practiced by faculty and staff. You'll recall last year, the district purchased 16 copies of Abraham Kendi's book, How to Be an Anti-Racist, for faculty and staff. The book uses racism to combat racism. Specifically, Mr. Kendi exhorts his readers on this subject by stating on page 19, "The only remedy to past discrimination is present discrimination. The remedy for present discrimination is future discrimination." This discriminatory field trip falls in line with his view of critical race theory. Sadly, there is a complete silence from the administration and board on this matter. No one has spoken out on this, and quite frankly, that speaks volumes. So, when a board member or member of the administration indicate this critical race theory is not present in this district, simply pay no attention to the man behind the curtain. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Eileen Breiner.
Hi, good evening. Eileen Breiner. I live in Downers Grove. In reading through the District 99 website, it's very clear that diversity and inclusion is of utmost importance here. All are welcome here, it seems to say. This is nice, but in looking through the school library offerings, it's clear that one subset of student population here is not represented in the library. These students are not identifiable by appearance, and they don't speak up for fear of retribution. These students are pro-life. They, along with students that have questions about the pro-life position, can find nothing in the library for them. For that reason, I have a list of books to be added to the library. I respectfully submit that all be added to the library. The first is A Child is Born. It's in its fifth edition. It's a classic. It made the cover of Life magazine when it first came out. Others include Fighting for Life, Becoming a Force for Change in a Wounded World by Lila Rose, Unplanned by Abby Johnson, Unprotected by Marion Grossman, also Love Unleashes Life, The Hiding Place, Subverted Siege, What to Say When, and a fiction Shades of Blue by Karen Kingsbury. I'm submitting this list to you and copies for the audience. I look forward to seeing them in the library offerings soon.
All right, that's all of the slips that I can see.
Thank you very much.
And then, well, we had a few letters. Later, yeah.
All right.
Okay, communications and announcements, report on Legislative Education Network at DuPage.
There's been no other updates. We have a meeting this Friday.
Thank you. Joanna, say something.
Our meeting is on Wednesday, and, you know, we'll be discussing remote e-learning at that time.
Education Foundation?
Yeah, we've met, and we were discussing the incubator class and what we're going to support, and I believe that it's been sent to the principals.
Yep, they're reviewing it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and it's up to them to decide. And they were all very excited when they went and enjoyed those students, and some of those incubator projects are just phenomenal. And we had them here last meeting, or the meeting before.
Last meeting, yeah.
You know, they all kind of blend together after a while. But, no, that was really excellent. And then, we had one entry for grants, and so that we're reviewing that, and I think we want to review it a little bit more with Dr. Thiele. So, other than that, and we're working on a fundraiser, probably more towards late summer for North High to-
To take place at North High.
Yeah.
The fundraiser's for the district.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's for the foundation, but, so, that's about it for the foundation, so.
Always grateful to the foundation for their support. IASB, Chris, anything?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay.
Nothing, no.
We have two upcoming board meetings. February 7th, we'll have our workshop meeting at 6:30 here, and then February 28th, we'll have our regular business meeting also here at 6:30 PM. We're going to go into closed session. We'll be coming out only to adjourn.
No action will take place?
No action will take place. So, I need a motion for the Board of Education to go into closed session for collective negotiating matters between the district and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, and litigation and an action against affecting or on behalf of the district has been filed and is pending before court or administrative tribunal, or when the district finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting, and the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, or educational study, or specific volunteers of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, or educational study, or volunteer the district, or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity.
So moved.
Okay.
Terry and Joanna.
Thank you very much.
I do have a question. I see people with numbers. Were they supposed to speak?
No, no, we took care of everybody.
Oh, okay, all right. I just didn't want anybody not-
We're good.
-to speak if they wanted to speak.
Thanks, Terry.
We're good.
Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Christopher Espinoza.
Aye.
Sherelle Fuller.
Aye.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupca.
Aye. We will take a short recess, and we'll-
Closed session will be in here.
Close session will be right here.
Okay.
At here, okay.